The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are the Board of Education norms, which are available in the Board Docs packet. And the next item on the agenda is the MSBA Monthly Report. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Consent Agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda item that is presented.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have Guidelines for Public Participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and respond appropriately by mobile telephone at a later date. In order to speak during public participation, the public comment form must be filled out and submitted to Board President prior to beginning the meeting. For policy BDDH-1, Public Participation at Board Meetings, the following rules will apply to public comment portion of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period. Each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Discussion will be limited to items from the posted agenda. All speakers must provide their name and address prior to speaking. And if there is insufficient time for everyone to speak, the Board will encourage participants to submit their questions in writing and utilize the process for putting an item on the agenda. I have no public comments. Next we have the Report of the Superintendent.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First up on the Superintendent's Report is just a review of graduation that happened this last Saturday night. Class of 2024 held May eighteenth at eight PM in the Peggy J. Johnson Gymnasium. We had one hundred and twelve participants in the graduation ceremony. Hundred and seventeen out of one hundred and eighteen seniors received their diplomas. And I talked to Dr. Boyd this morning, and we have one senior that's going to finish up a half credit, I believe, this summer. So that number will be changed to one hundred and eighteen out of one hundred and eighteen.
Good deal.
So, very enjoyable evening. There were a couple special individuals that I got to spend time on the stage with. Next up, oh, here's a couple pictures from graduation. Dr. Boyd, would you like to add anything to that?
I just want to thank you guys for being there and being present for our kids. It was really a special night. I'm gonna thank all of the faculty and staff that came and walked at graduation. I think Charlie's got a picture of our faculty and staff that we took prior to the graduation ceremony. It's just so neat to see that piece and then to hear elementary teachers talk about how they're going to recruit other elementary teachers to come and be a part of it next year because it's just such a special time. It's such a neat moment to see that, see those graduates at the finish line. And I know that I've talked a lot to our elementary and I've really tried to promote it to our elementary and middle schools because our kids talk about them. And I think a lot of times they feel like they're forgotten, and that's definitely not the case. Our kids, as we're nearing the finish line, yes, the high school teachers are the ones that are there and they're present in front of them, but so many of their stories and so many of their backstories really date back to some of them all the way back to kindergarten. And so that piece of it, to see those individuals come and be a part of that and experience that is so neat. Thank you guys for coming out to Dragons with Distinction as well. We had a super successful evening. Heard a lot of positive comments back from parents and the community in regards to that special ceremony as well, so.
The Dragons with Distinction, really special program, so I thank you guys very much. There were a couple of, they're all special, but there were a couple this year where kindergarten teachers were recognized, and that was super special. I saw at least five of them walking at graduation, so. Very neat. And thanks so much for very distinctly marking the parking spot.
Did someone finally take my face down?
I took it.
One of the teachers texted me, yeah.
I got back from my run and I took it off. So if you want it, it's in, it's in my pocket.
I didn't know what to do. I seen it there and I thought, what am I supposed to do? I'll take it. Mocking the backseat in case we were supposed to bring them back. But not, still, I'm like.
A teacher texted me. She said, you're the lone face left. I went, oh my God, that's when he took those down.
Well, it was funny because my husband, he was with me and he said, where do you want me to park? And I said, one of these spots opened up here, so we'd pull up there and. He goes, I guess that's where you're supposed to park.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. We loved you. Yes. It did. It did work. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to review a couple dates, the last day of school is Thursday, May twenty-third. We have a day and a half left. Dismissal at one PM. And then Certified Work Day for Certified Staff is Friday, May twenty-fourth. And now we're on to Principals Reports.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I like the new podium. It's nice and tall.
Oh, yes. That is really nice.
I'm gonna apologize in advance because this is rather lengthy compared to our normal ones, and I still feel like I left out a lot of things. This last month has been a flurry of activity and a lot of celebrations for the students. So this whole first slide is just different field trips our students have gotten to experience. Our kindergarten students were able to go to Discovery Playhouse in Cape Girardeau. Second grade students were able to go to the Magic House. Our third grade went to the zoo on the day of the tornado. We made it, oh, no, that was the Symphony Orchestra that they did. We made it back in time. The zoo was also rainy, but it turned out to be a pretty day. Our fourth grade enjoyed bowling and a park day. And then our fifth grade went to Busch Stadium to a CAPS program. It's a program put on by the Cardinals. We had field day fun. Shout out to Coach Kreitler. He always puts together a great field day. Our three through five students participate down on the track, and our K-2 students use the various playgrounds. It turned out to be a wonderful day, and we had great weather. On the left, we have our fifth grade guitar and percussion concert. Mrs. Bowman and, just Mrs. Bowman does this one, puts together a wonderful concert, and all the students get to learn to play the different percussion instruments, and they put together the culmination of learning to play the guitar throughout the year. And then on the right, we had our fifth grade mixer with Bloomsdale Elementary. Mrs. Grimminger and Mrs. Rowland put this together every year, and it's an opportunity for the two schools to meet each other before they go into middle school. Just recently, our fifth grade had their fire truck splash. It's something they started a few years ago, and the kids look forward to each year. They get to go out and they get to play in the water. It's, they think it's fun. I don't know that I would want to go home wet like that, but I'm not sure the bus drivers like that either, but that's how they go home. Mr. Kingery and I, down at the bottom, we do the Wheel of Fun, and one of the wheel pieces was slime. So we ran around to five or six different classrooms making slime with the students. Mr. Kingery did the first class by himself, and he said, oh, my goodness, you have to come with me. I had a mess and I learned so much. But then we went to kindergarten and things were, they were good from there, but the first one was a little messy. And then in fifth grade each year, the students really look forward to the dice section that they do. They do eyeballs and owl pellets, and I think if you can see from the picture at the bottom right, Mrs. Beckett enjoys it just as much as the kids. They all have their little surgical gloves on. That's so fun. On the left, the three pictures vertically are our pre-K-2 Family Fun Night. They had a space theme because it kind of was at about the time of the eclipse and Earth Day. So that was a really good turnout, and it's hard to tell, but they had some really neat stations, and there was like a glow-in-the-dark station up there that the students were working with. Just recently, the first grade did their summer safety presentations. This is something they do every year. They have different stations on camping and biking and snakes, and you can see there, Rob has a snake, and the kids love it, and I steer clear of the first grade hallway when that's going on. Nurse Becky talks about sun safety and how to wear hats and use sunscreen, so it's a really good time. Let's see. First and second grade mini fair. Thanks to Mrs. Sakowski, she filled in for Hannah Fritchie Dunsey because she wasn't able to be up there, but the show still went on and the kids did a great job. You can really see it's interactive, and the kids get to touch the animals and play with the animals, and it's just a great experience for a lot of the students. All right. At the top, we have our new Power Council. The first row are the third graders that will be fourth graders next year. Miley Apt, Lexus Evans, Haley Sumner, Maggie Nagger, Sawyer Nestline, Brooke Greither, Jana Meyer, Elijah Kurtz, and Elliot Google. And in the back row are the fourth graders that will be fifth graders. Chase Dunsey, Clara Brown, Audrey Gek, Hope Clayton, Elliot Ram, Keaton James, Brady Ram, and Harper Garth. These students help Mrs. Kingery and Mrs. Grimminger do a lot of things around the building and for our school. All right, on the top right, we have two retirees from SGE, Peggy Bonert and Steph Kunsel. They received their gifts, and they're in their little bags there, but they get keychains. Those were really cute. And at the bottom is our Fourth Quarter Power Celebration, our Fourth Quarter Sign Delivery, and then the Power Leader Celebration. Laura Ann Woods emceed that, and she did a really good job. All right. I told you, this is long. Get excited for the Red, White, and Blue Singing Contest was put on by the Ladies Auxiliary, twenty-two-ten, and we had first place went to third grade student Rain Hampton. She received a cash prize and moved on to the state competition. And if I remember correctly what they told me, this is her third year in a row of receiving first place for this. At the bottom, we have the Illustrating America Art Contest, and we had first place went to fifth grader Emmett App, Apps, and second place went to Myla Meyer. They both received cash prizes and also advanced to state. And at the top, Mrs. Schnitzler just did this today. They were the art winners K, or pre-K to five, so there'll be a Facebook post with all of their names and their drawings, and she put together a video that'll be out on Facebook as well. And then we have our Power Leaders. I didn't have Mr. Kingery here today to do my videos, so I had to do it this way. At the top, from left to right, Adeline Winslow, Austin McKinney, Bentley Rottler, and then we have a group, Waylon Nagger, Micah Kurtz, Brayden Fowler, Lily Roth, and Chloe Yunt. Then we have Camden Smlesley. Second row, Carter Brown, Claire Clinton, Easton Weeberry, Eliana Denton, Gemma Pickard, Leah Lindsay, and Liam Edwards. And rounding out the bottom, Lori Schuh, Mason Stribling, and Owen Williams. And that's it for St. Jen Elementary, and I'm sure I missed a whole bunch of events.
Thank you.
You guys don't ever think it's too long.
Yes, as she was reading some of those, I'm like, oh, I forgot that. I forgot that. Well, at least you don't have to listen to it twice. Okay, so we'll start with the Faculty and Staff of the Month. Mrs. Ashley Grine, she is always so positive and goes above and beyond to meet the academic and social, emotional needs of her students. She cares so much for everyone around her and will help anyone in need. She does an amazing job fostering and welcoming, fostering a welcoming, safe, and loving learning environment. Her smile around the building brings so much joy to others. I couldn't agree more. Ms. Jennifer Kettin, Jen is always so positive and has a smile on her face. She is so nice and kind to her pre-K students and makes them feel right at home. She greets students in the morning and comforts them when sad after being dropped off. That is true as well. So this next, whoops, I'm gonna go back to that one. Yes, this picture up here deserves a little bit more attention. Bloomsdale Elementary, we've become a heart-safe school, and we had Wholesome Donate an AED Machine. And Ms. Nurse Lori Gek wrote a little bit that I would like to read to you that she explained it a little bit more. This school year, we've gained a national recognition and received a generous donation from Wholesome through the guidance of pediatric cardiologists at St. Louis Children's Hospital and Project Adam. Bloomsdale Elementary School was recognized to be a heart-safe school, and at their 2024 National Conference, cardiologists from across the country and Project Adam presented Nurse Gek with a banner in celebration and recognition of BLE's dedication to heart safety. Our team not only developed a plan, but also practiced hands-on life-saving techniques as a team. The fact is, often there are no prior warning signs that a person is about to suffer a cardiac arrest, and it can occur anywhere to anyone. Every moment matters in sudden cardiac arrest. The best chance of surviving is within the first four minutes. Immediate CPR and use of an AED can triple a person's chance of survival. Because of the work that BLE has accomplished in just one school year, Nurse Gek was asked to speak at the Heart Safe, Heart Safe School Project Adam Conference. The audience was cardiologists, hospital board members, and those impacting legislation from across the nation. They discussed ways to help reduce the risk of death in the event of sudden cardiac arrests, not only in schools, but expanding into the community as well. Wholesome, the cement plant, cement plant here in Bloomsdale is also dedicated to keeping kids and our community safe. Like BLE, Wholesome has a team of employees trained to respond in medical emergencies. They came to BLE to present our emergency team with a generous donation of a brand-new AED. This is the second AED onsite at BLE and will allow for an even faster response time to deliver life-saving defibrillation if ever needed. We want all of our students, staff, and visitors to be in the safest environment possible. We have a big heart, a lot of love for our BLE family and friends. She puts a lot of, Nurse Gek puts a lot of hard work into this, and she has a team of students that also, she is also trained and help respond, could help respond if needed. So, this is Wholesome's crew, and they came one morning to present this with the AED, and these are some of the students that are on the student team. So, we're pretty proud. We just hope we never have to use it.
Yeah.
Positive Office Referrals. At the top, we have Tinley Gettinger, Cassian Renaud, Bristol Torrey, Kyler Mickish, and at the bottom, Ricky Stewart, Jayden Brawley, Ryder Young, Aiden Johnson, and Cassidy Halbert Beck. Our Spring Family Fun Night, we did a STEAM theme, and we had so many families come, and it was the night of the tornado, the tornado. So, we sent out a message. We shortened the time that we had the event. We still had an amazing turnout, and we got out just in time. We had some former BLE students volunteer, Jake Parker, Lana Gek, and Kennedy Bowen, so we love having them. We appreciate you guys sharing your students with us, A-plus students, NHS, whatever it may be. Rob Solkowski came, the St. Jen Museum came, and Kim Rapp also came, and she did a seed, seed station for us. It was pretty awesome. It was a fun night. Kindergarten Celebration Down on the Farm. It's been a tradition for twenty-some-odd years. We were pretty sad that Marsha Nelson, this is her last go at it. The square dancing is always a favorite of hers, so the kids did a great job. It was a cute night. Preschool's graduation was this month as well, so. Cute pictures. Fifth Grade Concert, just like Ms. Gek said, we had the percussion concert that Mr. Friedmeyer put on. They did a wonderful job. And the Write to Learn Award, this is something that Mrs. Nelson also heads up. They have two students from each grade level that are picked by their teachers or faculty members to read some other, a piece of writing for the school year. We celebrated our retirement. I'm very sad to see Mrs. Nelson and our Marsha Nelson, Shelley Gargitis, and Stacy Bell leave us, but they told us they will be back to sub. We said we'd take them. And then Teacher Appreciation Week, we were grateful for all the goodies that our PTO gave us, and then Inline Chiropractor came out, which was nice as well. So this slide, we have up at the top left, Lillian Polite. She has kind of, Ms. Guilford has taken her under her wings because she is a very talented artist and just needs to put her talent to great use. So she, she did those canvases at the top, and she wrote this little quote or message at the bottom. She said, "This school has inspired me to create these paintings. The dragon is Bloomsdale Elementary's mascot. The dragons are doing different things because we are our own dragons, and our differences make us, make us unique." So I thought that was pretty awesome. One is playing music, and one is doing sports at the top, and we hung them proudly in our foyer. At the bottom, in the middle, Mrs. Guilford has three, or had three students win the Youth Art Month Exhibit Awards. They had artwork. The exhibit celebrates K-12 art education and brings knowledge and awareness to the importance of arts in the schools. These students' artworks were on view at the Missouri State Capitol Building, which is pretty awesome. Aleah Terry, she is in third grade, and her artwork was entitled Ice Dragon. Joel Akins III, he's in fifth grade. His artwork is entitled Pineapple Owl, and Stephen Ferris, fifth grade, his is entitled Dragon, Dragon Eye. And then we had Mrs. Bowen and Mrs. Bell's class invited a previous student. She's now author and illustrator to share her book, Blair's Battle. She came two years ago and shared Darcy's differences with us. So it's pretty neat to see previous students come back and share their talents with our students. And we had the Tradition of Kindergarten Buddy Day. Incoming kindergartners come in, and our kindergarten teachers also do a book publishing party. They write what they want to, the students write what they want to be when they grow up. Their parents come, and they, they read their page to their parents. It's pretty neat. And we had Field Day. We postponed. It was supposed to be last Friday, but with the weather forecast did not look great, and I'm glad we canceled. It did start pouring at one, one PM, so we had it Monday. The predict, weather was supposed to be super hot, but it really wasn't bad at all. We had a nice breeze, and the kids had a great time. Coach Bosler and Ashley Grine spearheaded the events, and they did a great job. That's it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I get started, I want to let you know I left a yearbook for you. That's the middle school yearbook for this year. I think Mrs. Womack and her students did an amazing job, as they always do. They really seem to be on a, on a roll right now with cranking out some high-quality yearbooks for us, and just making sure there's a good variety of pictures. Every student is representative, is represented. They do a wonderful job of that. So hats off to those guys, and I hope you'll enjoy the yearbook.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a, I love that they have a chance to take those home before the end of the school year. At the top left, we have a photo of our Jazz Band students. They wrapped up festival season with a performance at the North County Jazz Festival. And I really want to brag on these guys because we don't teach jazz band in middle school. These guys stay after of their own time with Mrs. Elders and often with Mr. Hull, who teaches Stars for us, but he's a former band teacher. He comes in and helps with percussions, and they go to the Jazz Festival, not as a contest, but to be adjudicated by a respondent who tells them their strengths and weaknesses and, and helps them grow. And he had really positive things to say, not only about that rhythm section and the percussions, but also about the soloists as well. And I don't, I don't know how one, as a teacher, begins to teach someone how to improvise a solo. You know what I mean? If you think about creating versus understanding, those are two very different things, and, and Mrs. Elders has the knack for it. Unfortunately, we found some students that respond well to that instruction. Speaking of, this little guy in the middle is Henry Hadle. He's still relatively new to the district. He started staying, coming, coming to us after school for exactly that kind of thing, and then transferred to us full-time. He's a dragon now. And the Women's Club of St. Genevieve wants to sponsor his participation in one of the summer camps for music. He plays saxophone, and he also plays piano, too. And, and in addition to Henry, I'm hearing now, and this is information just coming in, that there are more sponsors who are also taking notice of what they're doing, responding to an all-call that Mrs. Elders put out there and saying, let's get some kids sponsored for these camps. So we'll have some more to announce soon, but I wanted to make sure to include Henry while I could. At the top right, we also had some students participate in the Illustrating America. Kinsley won first place in Arts Division, and Cadence won second place. So we appreciate what the VFW does for us and for including us in those contests. At the bottom, this huge amount of students is this year's NJHS induction. Now, some of these kids are about to move on to high school. Right. But even when you take those guys out, that leaves Mrs. Uziel next year with about sixty NJHS students.
That's awesome.
Which is amazing, and you guys know, those kids are the best of the best, and, and they have to meet a very elite set of criteria in order to even be considered. So we're really proud of the number of students that we were able to induct and, and that we've been able to maintain over the years. So congratulations to those students and to their families as well. It's a testament to their families, too. Some things to celebrate. Mr. Roth took his students to the Clavius Project. That's at St. Louis University High School. I believe this is his third year of taking students there. Those kids came back and were awarded gold with distinction, so they're on a hot roll with that as well. That's the highest you can receive. That means basically that almost all of those kids were perfect or nearly perfect on their competitions that day. That's, that's pretty amazing. These guys at the top right represent our million-word readers. There, we had about thirty of those. We thank the English Department for sponsoring that promotion. We were able to treat those guys downtown to some pizza and ice cream just last week. So we're really proud of those guys and what they put in. Bottom left is from eighth grade celebration, which we typically hold at the Community Center, and the bottom right is from the end-of-year celebration, which includes sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And I'm gonna talk to you just a little bit more about that as we get into the reader slides. I owed you a Spotlight Award from April. We weren't ready to announce at that moment. So I want to make sure that I cover that with you. It's Ms. Erin Stoll, and you can read the comments there, but I'm also just gonna go off the cuff to tell you that she does an amazing job of not only relating to some students who sometimes have a difficult time making social connections with adults. She really goes out of her way to make sure that, that she's able to do that with those students. But she also does a really good job of keeping the adults in the building motivated and how, that we have opportunities to be social with each other. She's an important part of our Positive Climate Committee. She's also an important part of planning our end-of-year celebration. She's an integral part in making sure that those schedules are thorough, that they're complete, that they're communicated well, that, that everybody has the supplies they need. They all know where they're going. She, she is a major, major part of that. So I want to, I want to thank Erin for that publicly and also recognize what her peers said as well. Thank you, Dr. McLeod. Dragons on Fire from this month. James Roth, Quinton Parrish, Lydia Brown, Eliana Moore, Shaylan Wolk had two, Molly Grass, Rhea Meyer, and Alina Rosenzweig. And I gotta tell you, it's taken all year long, but if you'll go on to the next slide, Dr. McLeod, we do have an ultimate dragon from St. Genevieve Middle School. That means, and this is Shaylan, the one who received two last month, that gives her four for the year, and it means that she's touched all three categories of family tradition, and excellent. So we treated her to lunch yesterday at American Custard, and we let her bring a friend, since she was the only ultimate dragon. We didn't want her to have to go eat lunch with us old crusties. So, so we let her bring her friend, and we just had a great time talking about school and talking about the year and getting to know each other better and, and celebrating her accomplishments through the year. And if you see the kinds of things that she was recognized for, it just makes my heart so happy that, that, that our, our building is full of kids like Shaylan. I just want to tell you that. She just happened to get some, some extra recognition this year. It just makes my heart so happy that, that we are able to celebrate students like her. And I thank our teachers for taking the time to write those recognitions, and thank Shaylan for being the kind of person that deserves that recognition. That's all for me. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you.
All right, how you guys doing?
Good.
All right. I'll start by explaining some of these pictures up here on the front. First, we have softball picture there with their conference championship plaque. And we have Mr. Mooney and Aiden Eisenbeis, who at graduation received all of the music awards. Sure you guys caught that. And then down here at the bottom, we have Zach Henderson and Logan. Zach's just always a good person, makes sure everybody's included and everything like that. And over here, we have a picture from the seniors' last day when they're in the senior tee singing the school song. First, we have for our Elk Student of the Month for May, we had Caitlin Gray, and for our Rotary Student of the Month, we had Peyton Bosler. For our Positive Office Referrals, we had Kennedy Fisher, Taylor Armbruster, Landon Rottler, Kylie Harris, Allison Loudenback, Sophie Bell, Lily Foth, Cole Nicholson, Charles Droste IV, Justin Schweigert, Carter Hogan-Miller, Jack Farrenberg, Maggie Price twice, Anthony Apt, Parker Warren, Elsie Schweigert, Carter Worley, Sarah Bone, Ava McConkey, Grant Wolk, Russell Clayton Jr., Ethan Kettlinger, Adriana Bennett, Alyssa Grass, Tylen Hager, Marlena Lucan, Damian Wheeler, Nathan Cummings, Isabella Watkins, Chloe Dixon, Emerson Brown, Gavin Gag, and Emma Gag. And then for some news we have going around the school with the GFWC, for that luncheon, we had a handful of students get awards at that. Like Dr. Mercer said about that middle school student getting that scholarship or to go to that band camp, we had a bunch of students going and getting awards from, from them as well. Recognized, we had Sophia Frich for going to Hobie, which is a summer camp. First with the local awards, for poetry, we had first a tie between Rea Kreitler and Noah Willett. Second, we had Keely Palmer and Loi Parker tie. And for third in poetry, we had Roxanna Hudson and Hannah Nelson tying. And then in the state for poetry, we had first for Noah Willett, second Rea Kreitler, and third Lori Parker. And then for the short story awards, in the state, we had Lori Largent get first, Chloe Choak get second, Matthew Burton get third. And then for local, Chloe Choak got first, Lily Largent got third, and Matthew Burton got second. And then also pictured there, we have the Elks Banquet, which is where all of the seniors that got Elk Student of the Month, they got recognized and a bunch of local scholarships got handed out, handed out at that as well. And then we also have the Solo and Ensemble Festival, which was something for band kids, band students and recognized their salons, Roth and Damian Wheeler. And then picture down there at the bottom is the senior trip that the seniors went on April 24th. And then here's a bunch of pictures for prom. We have Zach Henderson and Sasha Gallop at King and Queen. And then we have the entirety of court pictured there, which is Nathan Johnson, Russell Clayton, Adam Oder, Zachary Henderson, Gabe Willett, Vinnie Baga. And for the, for the girls, there's Penny Yang, Riley Murphy, Addison Haney, Peyton Bosler, and Taylor Armbruster. We have a bunch of pictures there from prom. Everybody had a great time, great snacks and drinks brought there from the, from the junior class putting that on. And then we have a bunch of pictures from graduation from this past Saturday. Picture that we have valedictorian Cole Nicholson. And then co-saluditorians, Char Droste the Fourth and Penny Yang. Picture, here's the picture from, that Dr. Boyd mentioned about all the faculty that was there. It was a lot of, a lot of teachers were there. A lot of teachers and staff members there to support those seniors that just graduated. And then for spring sports, we have a bunch of news from spring sports. First with track, our girls four-by-eight team got fourth for, for the state, for the state meet. Kale Clements got second in both the 400 and 800. Holland Zangaro got seventh in the 3200. Alyssa Grass got eighth in javelin. And that's all our, our placers that we had. And then for golf state, we had Aiden Roth. He was the only qualified for state for us after districts in Farmington. And he did as well as he could there. I mean, he was, he had the cards stacked against him being a junior at state in his first year, being on varsity, I believe. And then for baseball, we have pictured there Aiden Meyer. But a lot of news in baseball is they, as Mr. McDaniel, or Coach McDaniel crossed the 250-win mark this past month. And the entire team got academic all-state, like as a team collective, with a 3.2 cumulative GPA. And they also won the conference tournament. And individually for academic all-state, we had Luke Ferranto, Aiden Meyer, and Mason Nix. And then for softball, they also won conference championship and they placed top five for academic all-state with a GPA of around 3.6. And they had 10 players apply for academic all-state. And then pictured there at the top, we have FFA, where they had their Future Farmers of America, which is Future Farmers of America. And they had their Bring Your Tractor to School Day or Drive Your Tractor to School Day. Picture there's Wyatt Palmer, Owen Bowman, Seth Fisher, and Caleb McDonald. Picture here is Luke Ferranto, who had a personal essay sent into MAC and their English Department. He was one of the winners for that as well. Picture at the bottom, we had theater and choir banquet. Picture here's all the individual winners for those theater awards and the theater club performing one of the songs from the musical. And our teacher of the month for May was Coach Bonnell. He is, the teacher or the student wrote, "He is one of the most kind-hearted teachers or coaches that I've ever encountered. He genuinely cares about his students and his athletes. He would be willing to do almost everything, almost anything for the students here. He is always there for me when I need someone to talk to, but also pushes me to be my best and to do better when I need it. He has had an extremely positive impact on my time at St. Genevieve High School. Not only has been there for me, but he has been there for a number of other students and athletes. I noticed the interaction that he has with other students and he is always encouraging. He wants all of his students to succeed and be the best people that they could possibly be." And I personally have Bonnell for team sports and he is one of the most genuine people, but also the most encouraging and compassionate teachers that we have at, at St. Gen High. That's all I have for you guys.
Thank you.
Next on Superintendent's Report, I have a special award for Mrs. Jamie Boer. She completed 39 additional hours of board member training and has received her advanced board member certification along with a pin, so I want her to present to you.
Congratulations.
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir.
On to unfinished business, and the first item we have is a Prop SG update.
So we have quite a bit of items being completed and in process.
Here are some renderings of what the entryway to the Early Childhood Center will look like along with a color palette, some floor samples, some fabric samples, tabletop samples. We met last week and went over quite a bit of this. We had Brock Miller there, K RJ was there, Bethany Ketting was there, myself, Mrs. Otto. Just kind of working through the process, making sure the colors are in alignment and where we want them to be. To be quite honest with you, I step back when the color scheme gets talked about because people who have a better eye than I do need to be involved in those decisions. So here are some in-process pictures of the Early Childhood Center. I keep trying to entice my kids on Sunday to go out there with me and just look around. They don't seem to be as interested as I am. But I go out every Sunday just to check on progress and see how things are coming along.
Wall panels in the classroom hallways are being installed. Met with the architects to over-color schemes. And here's a fly-through that Bailey went out and got for us today.
It doesn't even look real. The sky is amazing.
And when you look at the building from the, from 61 as you're coming in, or if you just try to drive by, it looks big.
It does.
But when you get next to it, the size really starts to make an impact on you. And I, I stand in the middle and look down the hallway of the five classrooms and it's, it's an impressive size. It's really going to look.
It's exciting.
For St. Genevieve Elementary, there's a rendering.
Wow.
That's completely different.
We held the bid opening last week. We had a large turnout. We had a stack of bids. I was very, very pleased with the turnout. Many, many local bidders. Some numbers came in higher, some numbers came in lower, but when we got to the end of the day, it was right on par with what Brock Miller had anticipated. We're right at 4.75 million. The number also includes about $250,000 of contingency allowance, allowance and about $50,000 for soil remediation, which we think we will have to use in this project. We haven't had to do that yet, but we think we will have to use that. And it's probably based on some fill that was put in there that's going to have to be remediated and then filled in with some clay. For the next steps, Brock Miller's working with contractors to start the value engineering process to see if we can reduce that number even more, whether it be alternative materials or just thinking differently about what we could do in specific situations. We are looking at HVAC closely to see what kind of units we're going to have on that building and if the, the units there are on par with what we currently have. The gymnasium is finicky because of the wood floor. You have to have the right-sized unit. If it's too big or too small, you're going to have issues. So they're working through that right now. Work on this project will start probably next week. Starting the parking lot and Matt Dig wants to get in here and put a fence up already, so it's going to be fast and furious. We're going to fight for space, I'm sure. Cost estimates roughly, Bloomsdale was about 769,000. St. Gen Middle School was about 1.5 million. Early Childhood Center is on par to be right at 8.2 million. And now the St. Genevieve Elementary has come in, they're right at 4.75 million. Those first four projects, without any additional issues, are right at 15.2. Because you never know what additional costs they'll be until you break ground and start moving some of those things around. Which leaves roughly about 5.1 million for an athletic wrestling facility and that was on par with alternate, alternate number two with a wrestling facility, restaurants, and a turf. So keep in mind, architectural fees are not included in that, nor are CMA fees. So we're, we're on par with where we want to be. We said we wanted to get, we wanted to save enough money to do a quality facility that was a minimum of wrestling, but that we thought we could do more. We're on par for that, given that we don't have any additional issues going right now. So we have high hopes. And I think, is that all that's, Dr. McLeod? Yeah. That's the Prop SG.
I love that you integrated the sign. Looks just like Bloomsdale Elementary in the front there.
Yeah, and if you'll.
Ties them all together.
Yeah, if you'll remember, the Early Childhood Center also has that green panel on it too. So it pulls them together and kind of, kind of shows that these parts of the buildings were all built during the same timeframe.
Yeah.
Very nice.
We are still going to have to walk out there and look at the marks on the ground. I want everybody to be aware of where this is coming out to, because it looks real pretty right there.
Well, Matt will have, Matt will have a fence there anyway.
Yes, he will. But we need to get a scale of it. And you don't get the scale of it until you're actually out there looking at the building.
Looks pretty big right there.
Remind me when the anticipated finish date of this is?
I think it's the entire school year next year, hopes to be finished sometime in the summer. So then when we open up for '25, '26, we'll be ready.
We'll be ready.
It's exciting.
Yeah, so can you see that ramp there on the left? It, it comes from the, that left sidewalk where those people are walking, those dark figures? Yeah. And if you go to the right towards the door, that's a ramp there leading up to that door. But then it could go all the way up to the main level? So, great question. When you walk in, that's going to be down on a lower level. So you're going to go over to the steps. There'll be steps going up, but there will also be a lift there. So it won't be an actual elevator, elevator, it'll be more of a lift. We looked about seven different ways to do a ramp, but the length, the pitch that you have to have on those had us switching back about four different times inside of the building. We looked at extending it out to the left and putting it over there and having a ramp. It was just too many switchbacks. And when you think about being on crutches or a grandparent or somebody in a wheelchair having to go back and forth and back and forth, it was just too much. So we had, we landed on the left.
Next, we have the MSBA Full Maintenance Service Agreement.
So several years ago, we transitioned to having board policies and procedures online. This is just your annual approval of continuing that. I remember back when I first became an administrator, we had, you know, four and a half, five-inch binders filled with policies. And every time a policy got changed, you had to remember to, to replace it. This fixes all of that. Everything's updated real-time. As soon as you update a board policy or approve a board policy update, that goes back to MSBA. They update it and everybody has a copy of the update. So I would recommend that you approve that as well.
I'll motion to approve Missouri School Board Association Full Maintenance Service Agreement and Membership Effective May 1st, 2024 through April 3rd, 2025.
Before we make a second, I just want to point out that I believe the price did not increase correctly.
It did not. Same as last year.
Okay, go ahead Martha, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, or we go to new business, and the first item on the agenda is the A+ Partnership Plan.
And I am going to defer to Mr. Schenable.
Good evening. Yeah, so the A+ this year, you see right here, the, oh, holy cow, 23, 24-year, all our interns adds up to about, we have about 40 students this year. And then our cadets, this is one I, you want me to talk about this or you got? I'll, I'll get this one.
Either way.
So our cadets, cadets, you can see, we dropped from, we were at 19 in 2022, 2023, and we dropped down to eight. The reason being, we're really trying to focus in this program, just geared towards those students who want to go into the teaching field. So you probably take a handful of the students in last school year who really did not want to be teachers, they were just in that program, to really just get some A+ hours, which is great. But this, this, this program with Mr. Roth is, and Mr. Roth and Dr. O'Brien have been really trying to revamp it. So we are down to eight, but I know we'll eventually get that back up to probably where it was last year. So that's just explaining that slide right there.
Can I, can I throw something?
Absolutely.
And through the Grow Your Own grant, we work with Dr. McLeod, we've actually been able to offer scholarships to students that are taking that teaching class. Mr. Roth and Dr. O'Brien actually offer that for college credit through CMO. And so those students that complete that give their first round of observations that all teachers have to go through when they get into an education program. That's covered through their class. And so that's something that is, that's really unique. And they, they do some really neat things that they actually have a classroom portion now, so they have their field experience where they're out in, in a classroom doing that work. And then they have the classroom portion where they're working on lesson planning, where they have speakers that come in, where they're doing things that are very intentional with that classroom portion. And then they also use that classroom portion to go out and spend more time also out in the field where Mr. Roth and Dr. O'Brien can get out and conduct evaluations of the students and give them feedback based on the teacher evaluations that we use. So they are very, very intentional with what they're doing. That number, you can see all the way on the left-hand side, 66, we were running it through our, our club day. And that was just any student that wanted to take it for A+ hours, Mr. Toons and I were running that at that point in time. Kids were doing it all individually, they were doing all the assignments individually, and then they just had field experience somewhere throughout the day. But we were able to only meet with them and have time to spend with them once a month. Now these guys are meeting with Mr. Roth, Dr. O'Brien every single day within that classroom portion. So it's much more intentional. But you can also see the A+ or the internship number is up, where we are now using something called career exploration to be able to put students out of the field that are looking at just needing A+ hours. So they can still get those mentorship, they can still get those opportunities, but it's done through career exploration now instead of the actual cadet teaching program. Those individuals are maybe not necessarily looking at doing that as a career. We do see some students that go out in the field and they get experience in it through career exploration and are like, you know what? And so it kind of gets them excited about it and now they start to consider education. But that eight number individuals, much more intentional with they're really looking at or considering going into education.
So that Grow Your Own, Mr. Bosler and I were talking, I heard that several times during graduation. That's a CMO scholarship?
It's, it's a grant through the state that we applied for. And there's many different, there's several different facets to it, of what we are doing. We had some promotion pieces that we were able to do. We were able to offer some scholarships through the Grow Your Own piece. And we actually have a couple of ideas or a couple of changes. I was talking to Mr. Toons the other day, some tweaks and some things that we would like to include in the grant proposal for next school year, maybe some ways that we can get Mr. Roth and Dr. O'Brien out in the field a little bit more to be able to do some more evaluations and spend a little bit more time with our kids actually in the classroom so they can give them that feedback, looking at maybe some subbing opportunities or some things during the school day to be able to push them out into the field to, to work with our students a little bit more.
Ain't talking about that one. So back, back to A+. Talking about our graduates this year, so our 2024 graduates, we had 19 seniors that graduated with A+ honors. Now to those 19, I was looking at them today, I think about 14 of those seniors will use A+ tuition. We, I mean, it's, I was talking to Dr. Boyd today, comparing the years, comparing last, last class, our last year's class to this class, it really, they really is, they really are different. This year, I was just looking at the numbers for our class this year, we have 26 students who are going to a We have twenty-six students who are going to a four-year university. A lot of those four-year universities do not do the A-plus program. And then we have thirty-two students who are going to a junior college. They do, that is A-plus. We have seven students going to the military. We have four students going to cosmetology school. And then we have thirty-three students who are going straight into the workforce. So, I mean, it's, all our students are kind of all over the map. So, that's kind of the reason why our numbers are down. But to kind of look at what we have in the other classes, right now, our juniors, actually, when we met at our luncheon about a month ago, we had fifty-one juniors in the program, now we're up to fifty-nine. So, we have fifty-nine juniors in A-plus. The sophomores, we have thirty-four, and the freshmen, we're at twenty. So, I do anticipate that as we go throughout the years, these numbers will gradually get larger and larger. Last year, the two thousand twenty-three graduates, graduates have thirty-eight seniors who do graduate with A-plus honors. But like I was saying, it's, every class is different, so. Just some interesting things. Our some students that we had this year in the A-plus internship, this allows, we have some students who can go, they're here for a certain amount of time in school, and then they go into the workforce or a field that they're interested in. So, just some examples, Brian Schwint, his A-plus internship was at the Farmington Airport. I don't know if you guys know how many people who are actually, who can say they're pilots, but that just, I mean, that's just really cool. Caitlin Gray, her internship was at the veterinary clinic here in town. Elena Schimmel was at the Memorial Hospital in town, and also Mid-America Rehab. Mason Nix was at Duane Doza Autobody. Megan Jarvis helped out at her own preschool. Hit that. So sorry.
You're limited.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, those are just our A-plus internships. Really cool, really awesome individuals who are doing some amazing things for us. We do have a lot of opportunities in A-plus program. There are a lot of requirements, but one of the main ones we do focus on, because it can be hardest, is the A-plus hours. You have to have fifty A-plus hours by the time you graduate high school. We do offer a lot of opportunities. So, we have Dragon's Den. So, once the school starts every year, we can, some students can go down to Bloomsdale Elementary, they can go up to St. Jen Elementary and help out after school. We have Dragon Fire, so every Tuesday, Thursday in high school, there are some opportunities to, for our students to do some tutoring hours. Advisory intervention is just digging into, trying to identify those students who need a little more help with some classes, whatever it is. We have some just straight-up individual tutoring, that's an example. Cadet teaching like Mr. Roth and Dr. O'Brien do. They can help out the tech, the technology department, the child development, the CDA program. We have a bunch of other programs here. Kindergarten registration is a huge one. ESY, Extended School Year, so that's starting up here soon. Bloomsdale-Carnville, we have a lot of students. Bloomsdale, Dragons Dungeon, Kindergarten Buddy Day. We have high school mentors with Dr. Draper, the A-plus internships. And actually, this year, we've had a couple of events with the St. Genevieve Head Start preschool, where we've sent some students out there to help out also. So, we do offer, we're, there's so many opportunities for our kids to get involved with, whether it's here at our school, with our students, or at Bloomsdale, or at St. Jen. And we're starting to really start to see some of our students get out in the community and help out too. We want them to help out our students here, but if there's some opportunity for our students to connect with community, I do try to push them that way too. But I love this, it's only my second year doing it. I think it's an amazing thing. If we had A-plus program, when I was in school, I would absolutely have used it. I mean, college is so expensive. The way our community, like I said, we got to look, every class is different. I also think it's important you know what kind of community you live in. We have a community where we're always going to send a handful of students to college. I think we're also, we're that blue collar, hardworking community where some of these kids are going to go to those tech schools. We should, we have a handful of kids doing that too. But, I mean, they just need a little bit of tuition help, so. We're always there for them, always looking to improve. And with that being said, Adrienne Bennett is helping out. So, at the A-plus luncheon, just to kind of, which I think has been awesome the past few years, just invite some of the local members, local community members into the school, have a luncheon and talk about the A-plus program. We always in the meeting with what can we do better? So, we were, what we came up with was just better communication, getting those parents information about the A-plus program. So, like at Open House or Freshman Orientation Night, Adrienne Bennett came up with this idea of this pamphlet, this brochure, that she came up with all by herself. So, at those nights, we can pass those out to those parents. So, it's just another opportunity for our parents and our students to get a little bit of idea of what the A-plus program is about.
Can you pass that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I will say, from experience, that even if a child goes to a four-year university, they will give them some credit or some money for having the A-plus designation. They call it different things depending on which college you go to. Some colleges will call it a residential stipend. Other colleges call it different things. So, they have paid attention to the number of students being drawn to A-plus and going to two-year schools, and are paying some attention by putting money where their mouth is to try and entice them. If you have A-plus hours, we'll throw an extra thousand dollars on your stipend to come to us, because we know you're giving up the A-plus stipend to get it paid for at a two-year university.
So, Adriana, you know you're going to be missed. You know you're going to be missed.
Oh. I was talking about how my college is going to give us, it took out the A-plus program like last year, but I called whoever I needed to talk to, and they said that they'll give out, I think, a thousand, maybe fifteen hundred, I think maybe person that's there, just because I got certified for A-plus.
That's awesome.
But they don't really, do schools not really advertise that? You have to be proactive?
You have to be pretty proactive, and it's fantastic that she called, because you never know what they're going to say until you ask. So, congratulations.
That's great.
I've got a quick, on the hours, let's say, somebody's just going to be a senior to say, well, I'm going to go to the A-plus. Anything they've done prior, does that count for the fifty hours if they mentor or anything like that? Or are you using pretty much the day you sign up for A-plus moving forward?
I mean, that's a conversation we can have. But, I mean, I have some students right now who have done some A-plus hours, but they're not in the program yet. So, I'm keeping their log sheets, and if that's something that we have to come back to, absolutely. I just hate to turn down students who want to try to help themselves. So, I mean, if I can help them out in any way possible, but geez, I'm so sorry. I'll explain that later.
That's in case our meeting was boring, right?
So. I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can stay for the next one, Dustin. Uh-oh. No, it's transportation. Any other questions on the A-plus partnership plan?
Nope. I'm looking for it. You should put that little caveat in there, because I, if it's not, I'm going to read it. Because a lot of times, kids don't do A-plus because they think, I'm probably going to a four-year college. I don't know. I'm not, I'm not going to do it.
So, where, there's, so I put a picture of Drew Toons on top and Bryant on the bottom. I didn't specifically talk about how some colleges accept it anyway. I did, so there's a QR code on the very back that has all of the current sort of high schools. And I put that it's like since two thousand twenty-four. But in the middle, when I was talking about Drew Toons and Bryant, Drew Toons went to a college and it ended up closing down, and that school wasn't eligible for A-plus, but because his school closed down, he needed to go to another one, and he already had an A-plus, he was able to go to, I think, not, and get it paid for anyway. If you catch any spelling errors, let me know.
And I mentioned there was nineteen, nineteen students who graduated with A-plus hours, and fourteen were going to use their, those tuition hours. Those other five are some of those students who are going to a four-year university, but they still decided to go ahead and get all the A-plus required, just in case. I mean, I tried to explain that to them, you never know what's going to happen, never. So, it might happen, and you have to go come back home, and well, there you go, A-plus is right for you.
And I think even if you, well, we just talked about it with Drew. If you choose to go to a four-year school and it doesn't work for you, and you transfer to a two-year, your A-plus is still-
Good for four years. Typically, up to sixty hours.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion. Any seconds?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the A-plus partnership plan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Schnebel, you're up again.
Give or go.
I had to, I had to throw it on there. Next on the agenda is transportation. So, this has been an ongoing conversation. We are currently in the second year of a five-year contract with Fowler Bus Services, which was signed on April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Early in the year, it was mentioned in one of our meetings that we were talking about routes and what we were going to do with changing routes and the challenges with getting bus drivers, and how could we support them in trying to identify and retain some bus drivers. It was, I think, mentioned that they would be interested in getting out of the contract a little earlier than the end of the five years. So, I thought, oh, okay, well, I have a year or two to prepare. And then in a subsequent conversation, it came up, have you thought about that? Because we'd really like to be done at the end of the year. So, then that got me thinking about it in earnest, and I spent quite a bit of time researching. My time's up? I spent quite a bit of time researching what it would mean if the district took on its own transportation, what our options were regarding transportation, and could we contract out? Could another party step in and fill the void that Fowler would leave? I had conversations with numerous parties, including DSE. I've talked to David Trammell and Tammy Lehman at DSE extensively regarding requirements for transportation. I've talked to our legal team at Miggis O'Toole. I've talked to our finance company, LJ Hart. I have talked to many superintendents, all of the superintendents in the M-triple-A, and several more. We are the only school in the M-triple-A conference that currently contracts out transportation services. All of the other ones run their own. So, there's a wealth of knowledge there on how they manage it. Obviously, they're different communities, different geographic areas than we have. So, I came up with options. Should we post an RFP for an outside entity to come in and run transportation services? What happens if another bus company or another company comes in and purchases Fowler and then steps in to fulfill the contract? Should we take on transportation, and what would that look like? Or some combination of those? So, I bounced around quite a bit. I researched property values, I worked with them to develop what the property values are, what the fleet value is, what operational costs are, not only for Fowler, but for other school districts in our conference. And then what would the purchase options look like? Ultimately, I landed on it would be in the district's best interest to attempt to purchase the facility, and purchase the fleet, and bring transportation in-house. That decision was not made lightly. I did everything I could to identify a better option, because one of the consequences of running in-house transportation is not being able to transport non-public students. And that's something that I have witnessed before at another school district where it occurred. Now, that was a choice. This wasn't something that we were looking to do, but our relationship with Fowler has been decades long. They've been fantastic partners. They've worked with us every time an issue arose, and have just really worked their butts off to run a quality transportation and provide transportation for our students. So, I landed on it would be in the district's best interest. I asked Brad and Christie to come tonight, see if you all want to say anything, or if you all have any questions for them. I think the issues with, they've done this a long time, issues with trying to find a bus driver, and having to fill in both of them, I don't know how many times a week, quite a bit, whenever needed, and having to drive buses on top of managing the financials, managing the people. It's, they're at a time in their life where they're looking at maybe doing a little traveling and maybe a little retirement and joy, and probably grandkids and all that stuff. So, that's the background. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. I've had meetings. We had a meeting with non-public schools. I've talked to two of them, who, those two are the ones that we currently transport kids for, and kind of explained the situation to them. I went out yesterday morning with Brad and Christie to talk to all the bus drivers and try to answer some of their questions. There are so many individual situations with bus drivers, you know, some are retired, some have multiple jobs, and it's just going to be trying to navigate those individually and what that looks like as we transition over, should you approve this. So, my recommendation is going to be that I'm asking you for the authority to finalize contracts and enter into these purchase agreements with Fowler Bus Company. And the property is owned by the Shirley A. Meyer Trust, so it would be entering into a contract with that trust as well. Keep in mind, I don't think I've mentioned this, the property is owned by the Shirley A. Meyer Trust. The contents of the building, the bus fleet, and there's an additional piece of property with a tower, a radio tower on it out at Breeze Hill, I believe, is that correct? That comes with the other purchase as well. So, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Well, my question, I guess it's a question, I just want to make sure that they get paid.
Who?
The bus drivers, the same way. You know, keep them, I mean, because we do have to make them happy, or they could, what few we have, they could quit.
Sure. And that was one of the fears when this conversation started. We didn't want something getting out. We didn't know what was possible, what direction we were going to go, what might happen. So, we didn't want anything getting out with rumors, and, you know, we're already having a hard enough time keeping bus drivers. And we didn't want anxiety to start filtering out and perhaps causing some of them to leave and say, I don't, you know, I don't want any part of this. We wanted a chance to be able to identify the best path forward, have conversations with them, and hopefully assure them that they were in a safe spot, and that it would benefit them to stay on.
And they were pretty okay with that?
There were some serious questions.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, have no doubt. There were, you know, anytime change comes around like this, they start asking some really good questions. And it's not something that this district has had to deal with before. So, a lot of the questions are new, and we have to say, we're going to have to look into that and get back to you. So, because some of the requirements that a school district has running their own transportation company are very, very different than if you contract out. And so, we have to identify those requirements, talk about what we're required to do, and then look at options about how do we meet that requirement while still treating those employees fairly.
You mentioned we would not be able to transport others, students from other schools. Can you just say a little more about why? It's not a personal, it's not our choice.
Sure, yeah, it's absolutely not our choice. And as a matter of fact, it's absolutely the opposite of what we would do. Our non-public school districts have been good partners with us over many, many years. If we had the choice, we would partner with them and transport those kids. We would absolutely do that. The state constitution says we can't, and there's been two other court cases that have upheld the constitution and said that if a public school district owns their own transportation, they cannot transport non-public kids. You had mentioned that in the options you pursued, because we don't really want to be in the business of transporting kids. Did you reach out to other potential buyers, other bus companies? Sure. I talked to two, and these are two that are well-known. And the concern is, we have had such a great partnership with Fowler Bus Company for decades. And there has never been somebody trying to get over on the person. They're a hometown company, they're hometown people, they're dedicated, we know them. With an outside entity coming in, you don't know what you're getting. And I think a couple of you have talked to some transportation providers who have indicated, you'll get a good deal the first year or two, but what are you going to do after that? So, here was my fear. We contract with a bus, a transportation company, they come in and provide transportation services. There are a couple obstacles with that. The first obstacle is, where are they going to- The first obstacle is where are they going to house their buses? They're not going to drive them to St. Genevieve every day. So, they're going to have to have property to house those buses. They're going to have to have a maintenance facility to work on those buses. So, all of that's going to be built into the contract cost. Let's say we identify one, they're able to do all of that, and they come in and say, here's your rate for the first year. Here's your rate, we're going to give you a five-year deal, here's your rate for the first two years. After a year or two, they come in and say, we can't do it for that anymore. The district is left with nothing. We don't have a fleet, we don't have property where we can house buses or maintain buses. And as you are all aware and probably most of the public is aware, we're landlocked. We don't have any more land here where we can put things. So, we would be looking for land to purchase. That's one of the challenges with St. Genevieve is finding property to purchase. So, all of that played into the decision for me to make a recommendation that we bring that in-house because the navigating what a relationship would be like with an outside entity, I've heard nightmare stories from other superintendents who have contracted out. I think Mrs. Otto and I were talking today about a school district in St. Louis that their transportation isn't there anymore. And parents, they're, they're looking at offering stipends to parents for transporting their kids to school. I didn't want to put the district in place where we threw our hands up in the air and paid any amount of money to an outside contractor for transportation services. This avenue allows the district to attempt to take on transportation, hopefully do it successfully and fiscally responsibly. But, if we get to the end of next year and we're asking some serious questions about, is this fiscally responsible? Can we keep this up? The bus driver issue continues. Then we can start talking about, you know what, let's put out an RFP because we do have a fleet and we do have property. And if we put out an RFP, perhaps an outside organization could come in and then rent our facility. And we still have some skin in the game rather than being held over a barrel.
You mentioned this, bus drivers are obviously not unlike other, many other jobs, hard to find and keep, but we're going to keep the current staff, make sure they're paid what they're paid or more.
So, we're going to do everything we can to keep the current staff. There are some challenges with, are they retired? Are they retired from a peers' retirement group? There are limits on, on hours they can work. So, as, as I found out yesterday morning, we were meeting, there are so many individual stories. We're going to have to sit down, and I'm going to have to have Megan Donovan with me to sit down with them and work through each one of their situations to make sure we're checking all the boxes and meeting all the requirements for those individuals.
So, you're going to, this is all new. Are you going to have help for the first year? I mean, what do we actually know about running the bus service? So...
Thanks, Mr. Kirshner. Yeah, so, we have created a consultation contract where I think it's 30 hours per month. If we need Mr. Mull to come in and provide us with some guidance, I mean, the historical knowledge that they have about how we've operated for decades here is invaluable. So, we've asked him to kind of make himself available when it's convenient for both parties to come in and sit down. Our hope is that we will hire a director to run the transportation part. But, like we just talked about, finding people to fill positions is difficult. And this is a niche position that we'll have to, it has to be the right person to come in because you not only have to have the mechanical blue-collar knowledge to work on buses and to maintain buses and to figure out routes, but you also have to have the leadership ability to manage people. That's, that's why they've been good for so long. They're able to manage people and they're able to get their hands dirty, so.
I have a couple of questions. Can you talk about, address the issues if you had to buy a whole new fleet timeframe-wise?
Yeah, so, in, in talking to other superintendents who have ordered buses over the past year, one was just delivered that was ordered 11 months ago. So, if you're ordering one or two buses, it's 11 to 14, 14-month delivery. If you order a bigger group of buses, five or six buses at a time, they'll pay a little more attention to you because that's, that's a higher dollar amount. But you're looking at anywhere from 10 to 14 months for bus delivery. So, even if, if we go down this road and, and we're going to have to start updating the fleet, the newest bus in the fleet is 2014, so we're going to have to look at a bus update schedule and we're going, going to have to begin purchasing buses. And we'll have to get those ordered, should this be approved, the next year for delivery the following.
And then can you talk some about what it's going to do to us budget-wise?
So, you have to remember, St. Genevieve is a unique county with huge geographic area. So, when I am talking to other superintendents in the MAA who are much closer together and have a much smaller geographic area, their operational costs aren't going to be exact when I try to extrapolate those over to what we're trying to do here. So, I did the best I could. I worked with a very, very smart superintendent in the MAA who, who looked at my numbers after I had them all there, and he said, I think you need to look at your operational costs, I think you're low. And here's why. So, we talked that through. Operational costs somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.7 million, I've, I've estimated, along with the lease purchase for the property and fleet. The first year, we look at roughly a $500,000 deficit. That's all dependent on the money that's reimbursed through DESI, Transportation. This year, we received the full reimbursement of 75%. Senate Bill 727 passed, and that brings with it about a billion-dollar price tag. I think there's a couple other tax cuts scheduled to go into effect from the governor's, from the governor, last, last session, I believe, that, that went through. So, our legislature is going to have to find money to fund a lot of the initiatives in Senate Bill 727. My fear...
So, get your emails ready because I'm going to have mine ready.
My fear, there are some good parts of Senate Bill 727, some good parts that we've been asking for, for a while. It's the other parts that have the potential to pull money from not only transportation and us receiving the 75% fully funding for transportation, but also from the foundation formula. It's been a long time now that, that that's been fully funded, and we thank them very much for that. We, the, the governor did a good job in fully funding transportation and funding teacher salaries and funding the foundation formula. Now, there's going to be some new parameters, and the governor's going to be gone. And my fear is that those funds are going to be pulled from transportation and the foundation formula. So, my estimate will be greatly impacted by the amount of money we are reimbursed to DESI and that 75%. Right now, with that 75% fully funded, we should be, if everything pans out where I have it, it's a $500,000 deficit.
If everybody's wondering, the 75% still covers the Fowler contract as it currently exists or the new way we're going to potentially do this? So, there's no additional funds coming into it. It's truly just a wash.
So, you'll, will you budget the full 75% for coming year?
I am going to consult with superintendents who have been doing this a long time. We've, we've had extensive conversations about this, and I am going to align myself, myself with them because they've been through transportation not being funded fully. And so, I'm going to touch base with them.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's based on the prior year's transportation cost rate?
Based on prior year expenditures.
And three years ago, that, that was funded at 18%, if I'm correct?
I believe that's correct.
That's a big difference from 75%.
You talk about, we've been holding some money in reserve for some legal battles. Is that the money that could be used to purchase this or how are we going about that?
So, prior superintendents have planned for and done an excellent job building our reserves. Our ASBR had a reserve of 36% fund balances. That comes out of our operating balances, which is Fund One and Fund Two. We're preparing for what might happen in regards to the tax protest. And, and all of the ESER money was spent on salaries so that we could use local money other places and, and put some of it in reserves in preparation for that. That's, if we're lucky, a year and a half out. If we're not lucky, many more. We need to be prepared to support our assessor and support the other taxing entities in our community in that fight. So, that, that's not going away. But there is, there are some funds still there that we can utilize to do that. My hope is that that 1.7 estimate for operational costs isn't 1.7. It's, it's there because another superintendent said it needed to be there. Fowler Bus Company has had an excellent inspection score from the State Highway Patrol historically. It's been 100% many, many, many years. We just dropped below 90% this year, and that was due to a couple flukes, I think. So, the fleet is in good shape. I'm hoping our operational costs, and it's all going to be dependent on who we can identify to manage it and, and how good they are at their job, that our operational costs will be lower. And, and I try to maintain what our prior superintendents did, and you be very, very aggressive with expenditure costs and you be very, very conservative with revenue costs. So, I've applied that same line of thinking to this. I hope this will be really closer to zero than the 500.
Is, is there any sort of help we can offer our non-publics?
So, we, there are currently 44 buses in the fleet. And as we transition and talk about, should this be approved? As we transition and talk about new bus purchases or do we need all of the buses? They're going to be included in those conversations before those buses are traded in or sold to other entities. You know, we're obviously going to include them in the conversations to see if they would be interested in that. I'm not sure of the legal specifics regarding if we can work on buses that are owned by other entities or not. Haven't ventured down that road yet. But, like I said, we would love to continue our relationship with non-public schools, and we're going to do anything we can to help out.
Well, even though it's not super exciting to buy a transportation company, if we do so, I, I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Mull for all the work over the years, along with all the staff. And the fact that you came to us because you could have went somewhere else and we could be paying more for this all to happen. So, while I know it's going to be a challenge at the district level, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the conversations we've had mostly over the phone over the years and you working with us on contracts and things of that nature. So, thank you very much.
And I'd like to say too, I mean, I don't want to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
We appreciate what the school and county, you know, the staff, the boards, we've been through several superintendents and board members over the years, 24 years. And like Paul said, we've had a great, I think, working relationship. I don't know that we've ever had any hard feelings one way or the other, honestly. And it's been really good. The time's just come that we've, we've got to make this move. And we appreciate you considering it and hope you do go through with it. And we want you to succeed at it. We want to make it a good, smooth transition. Like Paul said, we're working on a consulting. We're actually already making notes of stuff we know that's going to have to happen quick. And we want to help you jump them, through them hoops and get it lined out, make everything just flow as smooth as possible. And we're willing to do that. And again, we appreciate you working with us and the good 24 years we've had. I mean, we thank you very much. And if you've got any other questions, just, but I do appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you too. Thank you. So, good luck.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Taylor or Mr. Mull or anything? I assume it's in the administrative content. Okay, we want to read that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to grant the superintendent authorization to develop negotiating fleet contracts with Fowler Bus Service Incorporated and the Shirley A. Meyer Trust for the purposes of purchasing the property, including the land, bus fleet, building contents, and radio tower.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, and thank you for coming tonight. I agree, I appreciate it. And next is a transportation director position.
We may have had to cross this one off the list if you didn't. So, obviously, we're short on time. You know, we have a day and a half till the end of school, but summer's going to happen quick. And, and like Brad said, we've got a lot of to-do on our to-do list, and there are several things that, that need to be done as soon as we can get them done. So, I'm going to work with him in the interim on making that list and seeing what we can get done in the interim. But we obviously need to identify a quality candidate to take on this responsibility. So, that's why I'm asking you to approve a transportation director position in the job description that was included in your, in your board packet.
And we spoke earlier, it'd be 12-month position?
It will be a 12-month position, yes.
Motion to approve the addition of a transportation director position for the district as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the food service prices for 24-25.
Now, the exciting stuff. Each year, federal law requires us to do a calculation. It is a convoluted calculation. I sat down with Lori Meyer Roth today and attempted to go through it, and there are several different ways that you can do the calculation. But, to give you some background, here are the price requirements over the last several years. This is not where we are. These were just, we put our numbers into the calculation, and these were the numbers that were spit out. Each year, the calculation is adjusted based on a 2% increase and then CPI. So, this year CPI was, I think, at 8.2 is what they had listed. No, I'm sorry, 6.2. So, it was just over an 8% increase. So, they, they put those percentages into the calculation, adjusted, and that's how we landed at the 3.56 number for 23-24. So, we go to the next slide. Based on those calculations, our reduced-price lunches are not, breakfasts and lunches are not going to change. They're going to remain 30 cents at all schools for breakfast and 40 cents at all schools for lunch. Our full pay is where we increased 10 cents from 180 to 190 for both, both breakfast and lunch at, I'm sorry, all buildings for breakfast. And then we're increasing from 310 to 320 for elementary lunches and 320 to 330 for local high school lunches. The adult prices, the information we need to do, the calculation is not out yet, so we're going to have to do it next month. But we are required, I think we have a total of 39 cents that we need to catch up on still. So, they list, you're allowed to do 10 cents a year and no more, but there's still 39 cents hanging out there. So, based on next year's 2% increase and then whatever the CPI increase is, we'll determine what that calculation will be for next year.
If we call for Dr. Fleek's, we always keep it as low as we can possibly, possibly by law, correct?
As a matter of fact, I did a little research and I saw a couple years, Dr. Williams was here, but we didn't adjust the prices they were in the state. So, it's, it's all based on the calculation.
This whole school year, I was like, hey, was it school year prior? Was it all free for everybody?
2021.
I think that was, yeah, I think it was 2021.
I, this is just Eric, I was like, I wish, I, I think all lunches, breakfasts, breakfasts...
I, this is just Eric, I was like, I wish, I think all lunches, breakfasts in school should be free, the whole state of Missouri. It just should, it just should be, it just should be, as well as transportation. I mean, it's free, but I'm saying we should get it.
We should get it for.
Yeah. We know there's.
It's kids, it should be.
Right. The sad part is, we helped some kids, and then they have to come to school. Not only do those kids come to school, maybe not eating, but then you have other kids that have that problem. I'm like Gary, I would.
Should have to pay for food in their school.
I'll make a motion to approve the food service prices for the 24-25 school year as presented.
I'll second. Oh, Josh, oh, go ahead.
Whichever one.
Okay, but Josh.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any personnel changes approved this evening during closed session will be provided in the draft meeting minutes within 72 hours of adjournment. As we move on to going back to closed session.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn and resume closed session. I think the Board of Education adjourned the open session of the regular meeting and resumed closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote for purposes listed in revised Missouri statute sections 610.021. Roll call, Mr. Mellett.
Yes.